All right. Good evening, everyone. Want to call the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for this, the October 27th, 2025. Like to welcome those who are in attendance here with us this evening, as well as those who are watching from home through media, YouTube, Facebook, and any other way that we get it up, and so people can see it. And we don't have anybody signed up for public comment this evening, and so that leads us to our first item of business, which is our invocation. We have Reverend Manny Ellsworth, the pastor of Central Advent Christian Church with us here this evening, and then we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Patrick Starnes will lead us in that. So, welcome Pastor.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, my family and I moved here about six weeks ago from the great state of Virginia. We have felt welcome and loved already here in Lenore. We enjoy the community, so thanks for the hospitality and the privilege of praying with you. Let's pray. Holy Father, we are so thankful for a time such as this. We ask that as the meeting progresses, Lord, may the hearts and minds of our leaders be lifted up and illumined before you. We lift up to you all those in this county. We ask for a blessing in their lives. In the name of Christ, we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just as an item of housekeeping, we need to move number 10 on the consent agenda up to our first thing, so that we can swear in our interim and deputy clerk to the board.
All right. Here in that move, anybody have any comment or discussion? And if not, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Chair, a move that we accept this evening's agenda as the interim county manager has presented.
All right. All those in favor, say five saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. And that brings us to our first item of business then, and that is the appointment of our deputy clerk, which is Ms. Iris Witt. And Iris was so kind to be able to help us in this during our transition. Our former clerk resigned and took another position in another municipality, and so we have asked Iris to fill in for a time until we can find a new clerk, and so she's willing to do that and to continue on even in that role after that, so we can have a backup plan going forward. So, with that, I'm just, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we appoint Iris Witt as our deputy clerk, and I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And the first item for Ms. Witt is to be sworn in. In our register of deeds, he's going to take one hat off and put his other hat on this evening, and he's going to swear Ms. Witt in as our deputy clerk, so.
Okay. So Iris, if you'll place your left hand on the bottom, raise your right, and I'm going to read this to you, and if you'll just say aye do at the end of each paragraph. Do you, Iris Witt solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Iris Witt, Father solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Iris Witt, Father, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office as interim and deputy clerk to the Board of Commissioners according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Iris. And we look forward to a long relationship, right? All right. And that brings us to our next item on the agenda this evening, and that is a presentation by Vaya Health. And we have Dustin Burleson with us here this evening. And so Dustin, you come.
All right. Well, thank you all. Good evening to you guys. Dustin Burleson with Vaya Health, Community Relations Regional Director that covers Caldwell County, among some others. And really just wanted to start, for some of you guys who may not know who Vaya is, we're a public managed care organization, and we really prioritize whole person health. So managing the Medicaid, state funds, and local funding to connect the people we serve with healthcare services and supports. If you think back to what Vaya used to be, we used to really serve those people who were behavioral health, substance use, and IDD. And a little over a year ago, when Taylor Plan launched, we began, if you can see there under Vaya Total Care, we began managing the physical health, the TBI, which is traumatic brain injury, pharmacy services, long-term services and supports for Medicaid beneficiaries. And then we also manage the Medicaid direct. So that's somebody that's not in a health plan, like a standard plan or Taylor Plan, that has a behavioral health, substance use, or IDD diagnosis. And then the last thing that we do is we manage the state funds. So all the state dollars that come in funnel in through the LMCEO, and then we have comprehensive providers in all of our counties that are really charged with seeing anybody that's uninsured that walks in the door. And I think I mentioned we got 32 counties, but if not, just to let you know that. So, one of the things, just wanted to mention today is the Department in North Carolina is preparing for the Rural Health Transformation Program. The goal is the federal funding to increase access to care and improve health outcomes for North Carolinians, three-plus million rural residents. And so you can see the background is part of the big, beautiful bill, federal legislation that looks like it's projected to reduce North Carolina funding by right at $50 billion over 10 years. This RHTP funding is $50 billion over five years. That's going to be temporary and non-recurring. So the first $25 billion is going to be split evenly across the states. You can kind of see what North Carolina is projected to get, and then the second $25 billion is distributed by CMS. I know the department is planning on doing that application. I think we'll talk about that a little bit in the other slides. But just so you guys know, I think North Carolina is the second most rural county or state in the United States, with 71 of our 100 counties being considered rural. There are five strategic goals that come out of this. One, make rural America healthy again, and so that's supporting the rural health innovations and new access points to promote preventative care and address root causes of disease. The other, sustainable access to care, really helping rural providers be able to have long-term access points by improving efficiency and sustainability. The workforce development, we know, is a challenge in some of our rural areas. This attracts and retains highly skilled healthcare workforce, strengthening recruitment and retention in these rural communities. And then innovative care, and then technical innovations, which is really promoting the efficient care, delivery, data security, all those things that's needed. So, North Carolina's application is going to outline plans to improve access to rural hospitals and providers, strengthen rural healthcare workforce, foster provider partnerships, and improve outcomes for rural residents. You can see the timeline here. The fall of 2025, the department was collecting provider and community feedback through input sessions. I'm pretty sure that just recently ended. And then at the end of the year, the target for CMS application approval, and then with the hopes of public notification, and the funding application process for providers and hospitals in early 2026. All right. The next piece of just some Vaya updates we want to share is, as you all, I'm sure are aware, especially the Speaker, is that the General Assembly is still working on passing a budget. I think there's been several, or at least a few mini budgets that's been passed. But either way, DHB and the General Assembly Physical Research both projected Medicaid shortfalls, although there might be a disagreement between the amount. Both the governor and secretary has sent joint communication outlines, proposed the changes to fiscal year '26 Medicaid budget and related provider rate cuts reductions based on the mini-budget funding. And so, the department's implemented rate reductions on October 1st, with Medicaid services being cut by 3% and targeted services cut by either 8 to 10. So Vaya is going to wait until November 1st to implement these reductions. So we're still operating on the prior rates, with the hopes that the final budget will eventually get passed and will mitigate these reductions. Another piece, just to mention, the single-stream funding, this is where we talked about the state funding for energy care that runs through, has been reduced about approximately $6 million based on the mini-budget. And so that's the funding that we get to really, you know, create services in these counties that, for people that don't have insurance when it comes to these things. And in the big news, I think that you guys have probably heard for several years, is the department announced that Blue Cross Blue Shield will be doing the family, Child and Family Specialty Plan, and that's going to go live December 1st. So we're working on warm handoffs with Blue Cross and things like that. So I think there's a webinar coming up Wednesday, if counties have a little more information on that. All right. A couple more things, and then I'll be done. So, Hope for NC Grant, something that we're just sharing that's impacting a lot of our lean recovery counties. I think there's a high number of Vaya counties that was impacted by the hurricane. There is a helpline for these community members if they want to call, and this just kind of shows some of the things that they get. And then this is just a map that shows the impacted counties in western North Carolina, with 22 of the 25 being served by the Hope for NC Grant. Real quick, I did want to mention CIT training. I did leave some brochures about CIT up on the desk here, and it's really something that Vaya trains in all of our 32 counties. I know Caldwell Law Enforcement, we got first responders, it's really good training if you want to participate. But we also want to make sure that people are aware that there are CIT trainers out there. And then there's crisis phone numbers, stuff like that on here as well. And then lastly, just wanted to give an update. I know we've talked about, maybe not here, but I know Mr. Potter has been a part of the Caldwell office that Vaya has on 825 Wilkes-Barre Boulevard that we're doing to renovate, to add some more substance use services in the county. And it's been a long process, but it is something that continues to move forward. We've identified a provider coming into that to provide a lot of substance use services to go along with your drug treatment court that we hope can really fulfill some of that. We are in the process. I think the goal of December 1st, to take some bids on that project. We've really got two options. That's one, is to renovate the current office and do an addition versus doing a completely separate building on the property. And so as that information comes, you know, continues to move forward, I will certainly let you all know about that. And that's what I got. You guys got any questions?
All right. Any questions or anything you want to add to any of that, Donnie?
No, I just, you know, I just, I serve on the Board of Directors for Vaya Health, and it's been a big learning experience and understanding exactly what they do and how much they're involved in the day-to-day healthcare of people in the Keshman area, which is the 32 counties. So I appreciate everything Vaya does. They do a really good job. If you look across the state at the other organizations such as Vaya, we're usually above what, you know, where they are as far as the audits and things that we do. So they do a really good job of managing what's there.
Very well. So we appreciate you coming through.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Giving us an update. Thank you. Yes, sir. Our next item is a presentation by our DSS Director, Miss Kim Arnett. Looks like Chris is coming, and a couple more.
Reinforcement.
Okay.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm just going to take a little bit of time to talk with you guys about a couple things. I've got Chris Conley, our financial officer, and Brandy Thompson, our program administrator with Economic Services. In case there are any programmatic questions that I don't know the answers to, Brandy is our expert in that area. And of course, if there are budgetary questions that we need more specifics on, then we're going to rely on Mr. Conley for that. So first, I want to say that I'm going to talk about two different things. One thing that's on the agenda, which is the HR1, the one big beautiful bill, updates on SNAP and Medicaid. Then I'm going to touch on the federal shutdown and what that's looking like for the county, because I know that you all and probably everyone watching is interested in that. So I'll touch on that a little bit at the end, if that's okay with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we'll start with the one big beautiful bill, which is also referred to as HR1. We're going to talk about the Medicaid and the SNAP implications of that bill for our county. So we'll start with SNAP. As you know, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program is really important to our county, as well as lots of other counties in the state as a whole. We have about 14% of our county residents on SNAP, which is about 11,141. Some of the statistics under that are more statewide. So four in five families participating in SNAP have either a child, a senior, or an adult with a disability in the home. Also, retailers get a lot of their sales from SNAP benefits, around 11 to 18%. Of course, with bigger impacts in counties like ours. They estimate that for $1 in SNAP benefits, about $1.80 in local economic activity is generated. So when we talk about eligibility programs like food and nutrition or Medicaid programs, there are really two major parts of those programs. There's the administrative piece, which is where, you know, it's the staff who are doing the work, who are taking the applications, who are making those eligibility determinations. And then there's the call, the benefits that the public participants receive, so the money that they get from the program. So we're going to first talk about the benefit cost share that is included in HR1. So the benefit cost share starts October, October 2027, where states are going to be required to pay a portion of the benefits for participants. Now, this has historically been something that is fully federally funded, and so states and counties haven't had to pay for that benefit cost to participants. But starting in October 2027, states will have to pay a portion. This portion of what the states are going to have to pay is based on what's called a payment error rate. So you can see it up there. They've simplified that as the per, and you'll hear people refer to it as that. And this cost share increases as that payment error rate increases for states. And so it is a state as a whole and not individual counties. So you can see on that chart there that if the error rate is less than 6%, then there's a 0% cost share. And it can go up to as high as 15% if the error rate is over 10%. And so we'll start having to take this into consideration in our '26, '27 budget. So when we talk about what the payment error rate is, that's really where benefit payments are made incorrectly. There's either too high or they're too low. And so any overpayments are already required to be recouped and sit to the federal, repaid to the federal government. So you can see on our third bullet there, the North Carolina cost share as a whole, based on the 24 payment error rate of 10.21%, that's going to be around a 15% cost share. And so for North Carolina as a whole, that's 420 million per year. For Caldwell County as a whole, that would be 3.6 million. So if the error rate were to drop as a state between 6 and 10%, the county cost share would be 2.4 million. And so here is how it breaks down as a state. There are the number of counties that are in those categories. So you can see there's 58 counties with a less than 6% error rate, and then five between 6 and 8, five between 8 and 10, and 25 greater than 10. Seven of them aren't in the sample, but we are in the percentage or in the group where our error rate falls under the 6%. So that's good for us, except it is a statewide error rate that they have to go by.
So Kim, in other words, even though we're lower, other candidates could be higher, which could cause the state to be higher?
Correct. Correct.
And that impacts us ultimately, right? Because that's higher.
Right.
Correct.
Right. So if all the counties were under 6%, then North Carolina would have a 0% benefit cost share. Unfortunately, that's not the case right now. And the state, they are working on ways to reduce the payment error rate, but that's going to take time, hopefully some technological changes that they can make within our state system that will catch those errors quickly and more accurately. So it's not, because errors can be because of an eligibility worker making a mistake, which can happen, or it can be because a family inadvertently didn't report something accurately, or because they purposely didn't report something accurately. So there are different reasons why those errors occur. Typically, they occur, again, in just how those, how that eligibility is determined or the benefit amounts are calculated. So what the state is looking at, or the, sorry, the federal government is looking at for the states, is they're only taking into account payment errors that are plus or minus $57. So anything under $57 does not count toward that payment error rate. So they do have a small threshold there.
Is that by week, by month, by year?
They take the error rate by month, and then they, it's, they look at it every month. And so they're looking at it.
$57 is a monthly fee. Okay. Pretty tight margins.
Yes.
Very.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, North Carolina has two options. One option is to pay the increased benefit cost share. And that is based on error rates from three years prior also. So they're looking at three years prior for that initial benefit cost share. And then as we move forward, they'll be taking more current payment error rates to look at.
So we can't get it cleaned up right now, and it benefit us?
Correct. Not immediately.
Yeah.
And then the option two is if we do not or cannot pay for the increased state benefit cost share, then North Carolina will have to stop offering the SNAP program completely, you know, which could be pretty impactful to a lot of our citizens. As you can see, 14% are currently receiving benefits. So that is for the benefit cost share. And I will say this too, we at this point do not know what the state will do as far as helping with the county's cost. So we don't have any information about that right now. So my purpose in being here tonight is just to give you this information, so you know it's coming. We just don't have exact, we don't have any kind of policy that the state has given us as to say how much they're going to be helping to pay these additional expenses. So the next one is the administrative cost share with SNAP. And so again, this is where, you know, this is the staff who are answering the phones and taking the applications and determining eligibility, how they get paid. So what happens now is the county pays 50% and the federal government pays 50%. So that is going to be reduced, and the counties will be responsible, or the state, responsible for 75% of that administrative cost, and the federal government will reduce theirs to 25%. And so this will start October 2026. And what that will look like for Caldwell County, based on our current staffing, is an increase by 560,000 a year. And so again, we do not know what that's going to look like as far as any help from the state at this point.
How many people is that for that amount of money?
How many people work in food and nutrition? How many people work in?
No, he's saying, how much is that 560,000? How many people does that equate out to, roughly?
Right. How many employees we have in food and nutrition?
We have 14 eligibility workers, but we also have trainers, supervisors.
So we have, we have 14 people who take the applications, do the recertifications. Then we have two trainers. We also have supervisors who fall into that. Then we also have, oh, I'm sorry, administrators who fall under that. Chris wants to say something.
Yeah, that cost does not simply stay up. It takes into account all of our operational expenses, the cost allocate to all the programs. So that's not just salary and benefits. That is, again, an estimate based on those cost allocated expenses such as postage.
Chris, could you step up to the microphone?
Postage, for an example, that $5,000 a month expense is going to cost allocate to all the different programs we have in the agency. FNS is about 10%. So FNS would pick up 10% of that $5,000 expense. So again, I just want to highlight, that is not simply staff, salary, and benefits.
So the cost of doing the program across the board, I got you.
Cost of doing business.
Yeah, to administer, yeah.
That cost is really, only probably about 60% of that is salary and benefits. The rest of that is all of our cost allocated expenses that distribute to all the programs.
At some point in time, I think it would be good for all of us who are sitting up here to have that breakdown between what all, where all that money is going to what area.
Okay. Yeah, we can put something together for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I had asked him to, we've been talking about this quite a bit, and I had asked him to put this together, because I didn't want the commissioners to be blindsided at any point in time. I wanted you to know that this, all this may not happen, but all of it could happen. We don't know where we are, right? So I just wanted you to be transparent, so you wouldn't be shocked when it, if anything, changes down the road. So that's why I asked her to come do this this evening.
Right. And we've had meetings, I know Wayne and I, and Tony and Chris have had meetings about this, and so we wanted to go ahead and bring it to everyone's attention that, you know, it's gonna, it, something is going to happen. We don't know the extent of it yet, but this, you know, county's being responsible for this additional cost is worst-case scenario. Again, don't know what the state will be helping with, so we'll...
And that's the key, that we don't know what the state's going to be willing to do.
And to the state's benefit, I don't think they know what's coming from the federal level, if I'm correct. So I think it's, there's a lot unknown out there at this point.
Correct. So we'll move on to, we will move on to the Medicaid changes.
I have a piece there, so.
So there are some eligibility and enrollment changes that are coming with Medicaid as well, as a result of HR1. So the ones that I'm going to hit on tonight are the work and community engagement requirements. And so what this is, is additional eligibility requirements where individuals are going to have to be, work or be enrolled in some sort of community engagement for up to 80 hours per month. And so that can look like employment, job training, community service, volunteering for one to three months prior to the application, and then at least one month within every six-month period. And so, and this work requirement is going to be for a specific population of Medicaid, and that is the Medicaid expansion that I'm sure you guys remember hearing about that was just passed recently. So that will come into effect January 2027.
By the way, I'll say right there, that Medicaid expansion was not supposed to cost us anything, right?
So you are, and so I...
I mean, that's what we were told.
Correct. And so I'll touch on that just for a minute, because one of the, I think one of the quandaries and one of the difficulties for the state right now is there is a trigger law, that if any state money goes into expansion, into paying for the expansion population, then expansion will go away. And so I think there's, you know, trying to figure out how do we help counties pay for some of this additional work that's going to be involved in these eligibility requirements and additional, something else I'm getting ready to talk about, additional recertifications, without the state having to put in that money. So there are, there are things that they're having to figure out right now, so that the expansion does not go away and the state's not paying for it. So we'll talk, the next one is the recertifications I just mentioned. Currently, we have 36,471 recertifications that our staff do. With the new requirements in HR1, they're going to be having to recertify this particular group. It's going to have to, Medicaid expansion, it's going to have to be recertifying every six months instead of every year. So that's going to give, that's going to create an additional six, around 6,500 recertifications that are going to have to happen every year.
Did you say that number again?
Yeah.
Thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-one recertifications every year.
Of eighty-eight thousand people in Caldwell County, we have thirty-six thousand?
Recertifications that occur. And Brandy can talk more about what that means if you would like her to. I think they want to hear that.
Yeah.
So for Medicaid, we get a recert, families get a recertification every year. So those are the number of individuals that are currently receiving benefits, under various programs of Medicaid.
And some of the, talk about family planning, just how.
So Family Planning is a program that is very limited service. Anyone of any age can be eligible for Family Planning. So if you apply for Medicaid and you're not eligible for any of the other programs, you would be put on Family Planning. And it's only, only covers birth control, any kind of contraceptives to that nature.
And so that is a very, um, basic.
Very basic, yes.
Program for Medicaid, but it does require recertification every year.
And I understand, we don't set those rules and regulations in the eligibility that's set by the federal government, not us.
Correct.
Somebody qualifies, kicked the aisle.
Right. I'm just, I'm just amazed.
I know.
I mean, I'm.
And so with Medicaid.
I know a lot of people, and I know a lot of people that ain't on Medicaid.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so with the work requirements, there is some expectation that folks will drop off of the Medicaid expansion program. And so we're looking at, right now, we have twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-four Medicaid expansion participants. And so we're looking at a fifteen to twenty-five percent reduction of that if their estimate is correct. And so there will be some, some reducing the recertifications, but we can't tell at this point exactly how many that would be. So. And this is just a brief timeline of what that, all of these changes look like. The SNAP work requirements are extended to adults ages sixty-five, and, and it was previously younger than that. And so that happened October twenty-five. The federal government reduces administrative reimbursement, so that's our administrative cost share we talked about. That happens October twenty-sixth. January twenty-seventh is the Medicaid work requirements. And then October twenty-seventh is the benefit cost share for states. So that is, that is the timeline, and I know that's, um, of course, I can answer any questions for you that I'm able to, and if I don't have the answer, I will try to get that for you.
How many we need to hire to make sure we meet the timeline?
Well, that's something that, yeah.
Because that's all new for everything.
Correct. And, you know, we, we look at, I think that's our concern for our staff, is one, you know, the payment error rate for, for food and nutrition. We're doing great right now, but we know that anytime there's a policy change, that's when your error rates go up. And so there's going to be policy change in FNS. And so we certainly want to look at our staffing and make sure that we have adequate staff to cover that and to make sure we don't go above that six percent. Because while it is a statewide error rate, we certainly don't want to contribute to a higher percentage in Caldwell County. So we want to make sure that that's being done correctly. And then, of course, with Medicaid, there will be additional work. And so we want to, we're going to have to look at what that is as we get further into this and as we learn what the state's going to do.
And that error rate also applies for somebody that is underpaid.
Correct.
Or not paid at all. So for the, for the naysayer out here that says, well, just cut everybody off.
Right.
You can't do that either.
No, you cannot.
Because the state's going to come back and penalize you for that aspect of it too.
And the state and the county, they have no say in who does or does not get benefits with these programs. It is a federal government program. So.
Now, there, I mean, we all know, how do I say this? We all know that there's, and I have a personal story I can tell you all offline, that there's people who, over the last twelve months, who have been put on Medicaid, Medicaid that didn't qualify, shouldn't have been on there, right? I think over the last several months, they are beginning to, um, be weeded out. And I think over time, you'll see, I can't speak for our county specifically, because I think we've done a much better job than some other counties of making sure that if somebody's not supposed to be on it, they're taken off of it. Because if you go out to the, to the marketplace, let's just say you're, let's just say you're married, you've got a couple of kids, and, and and the, the wife goes out and applies on the open market and goes into the system, puts all the information in there, puts your name and everything in there, there's a possibility that you could automatically qualify. That happened to my son, and he's not eligible. But it took him, oh, almost nine months for them to get him off of it. He's off of it now. But there's a lot of errors in the, in the system, right?
Right.
The system as it is, the, of the, the national system, right?
Especially in marketplace.
In marketplace, a lot of problems.
That's a mess. That whole thing's a mess.
I do, I do feel that, I think from a, you know, I think we're on the right path. It's just going to take us some time to weed through it all, to, to, to wash and flush out all the, all the stuff that should be flushed out. And we're probably looking, you know, a couple of years before we really know the true feeling of it, I think.
But in the meantime, we could be on the hook.
In the meantime, we could be on the hook.
For twenty-five or fifty percent of what we don't yet, so.
I mean, it, it could be, it could be a significant hit to our budget, depending on how things play out.
Yeah.
Correct.
Two or three million dollars is a big hit.
It is, it is.
It is a number.
We, we don't have that just lying around.
Right.
Like a lot of people think.
Yeah. And so that's why, you know, Donnie and I were talking, and we just wanted to bring this to you as soon as we could so that that's, you know, so that we can be on, be on the lookout for what.
Be planning for it.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions about that before I talk briefly about the shutdown and?
I've got lots of questions, but I'm not going to ask them now.
That's fine, that's fine.
I think you depressed us enough.
I know. I feel like I really haven't brought you any good news. I'm sorry. So with our shutdown continuing, the USDA has suspended SNAP benefits for the month of November, starting November first. So we put out a notice last week that this was a possibility, and now we got word today that if it continues, it, the November first or November benefits will be paused. And that's the word, that's the word that they're using is paused. So we are also putting out more information, probably tomorrow. I started working on it to this afternoon on our social media, on, you know, Facebook, on our county website, county Facebook page. We have given the information to our staff, so when people call in, that they know what to say, and they're all communicating the same message. And we've put resource lists on our Facebook page. We've put, we have resource lists in our lobbies. And all our staff have access to those resource lists for local food pantries. So we'll be putting that out again tomorrow. As far as taking applications and doing recertifications, that's still going as normal. Those operations are continuing. So that's, I do know that the USDA has put out, has indicated that individuals may receive retro bene, retroactive benefits for November. So that is a possibility as well. So there is some, some good news there that if they had to have their benefits paused in November, they may receive those retroactively once the shutdown is, is over.
Kim, when, when do those benefits hit during the month? At the first of the month?
So there is a long span during the month that those benefits hit. And it can be from the beginning of the month to close to the end of the month, like the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. Social Security number, it's based off the last four of the Social Security number, and so people get them all throughout the month. Yeah. And so we know that that's going to impact a lot of families, obviously, a lot of families, a lot of individuals here in the county. And so, um, we've tried to arm them with information as much as we possibly can. We've sent the information to the Health Department, um, to our community agencies, have the information about the local food pantries.
Kim, what's the, um, what's the possibility of sending letters to these recipients?
Uh, I know that the state is actually text messaging all the recipients. And so they, the state is putting out notifications through text messaging, their websites, social media, things like that. So they, they will be getting that.
The reason I say that, a lot of senior citizens and people with disabilities may not have access to social media and things of that nature, so.
So they'll be getting text messaging for that.
What magnitude of cost are you talking about to feed these families if they don't get the money?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I didn't.
At what cost? Dollar-wise, if they don't give the people the money to feed themselves, have you got a dollar number on that?
I can tell you that benefit amount for Caldwell County is around, I'm going to check with Chris, two million a month?
Almost two million a month for this calendar year.
Whoa.
Each month, um, it's about two million.
Per month. Repeat it, per month.
Is that, is that what you were asking?
Yeah, that's exactly what he's asking. That's exactly what he was asking.
And states, states cannot, um, well, I don't say they cannot, let me, let me rephrase that. The federal government will not reimburse states for paying that for two recipients, right now during the shutdown.
So that's a non-reimbursable. And you may not get it back if you just stepped up to the plate and did it.
That's the reason I was asking.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right. Yeah, unfortunately.
And that's affecting fourteen thousand?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand, okay.
Yeah, eleven thousand. For us, staffing-wise, at this point, the only concern that we know of is a delayed reimbursement for our staffing. So we haven't heard of any other concern yet as far as funding goes for staffing and the administrative part of the programs, uh, other than delayed reimbursement. Now, that doesn't mean something may come up later, but as of now, that's, that's what our concern would be there. Uh, we also have an emergency assistance program. I'm going to let Brandy just speak about it for just a second about what the shutdown, what that might, um, look like with the shutdown.
And Kim, those positions that you were just speaking of, we pay, the county does pay a portion of that, and so it's like a fifty, well, whatever.
Fifty percent. Right now, it's fifty.
So if they, if we don't get the fifty percent, then potentially we could be on the hook for that other piece.
Um, well, and I can let Chris talk about that, talking about the employee staffing and the reimbursement and.
Yeah, at this time, we just think there may be a delay in reimbursements. So, yeah, the county may be on the hook for it for a month or possibly two. But prior to the end of the fiscal year, we would get that money. It would be reimbursed, is our understanding at this time.
At this point, we have, we don't have the concern that it will not be reimbursed. We have the concern it will be delayed, but we haven't gotten any information to say it will not, it will not get reimbursed.
I want to go back a step on the two million people.
Two million dollars.
Two million dollars, eleven thousand people. That's a hundred and eighty-one dollars a person. Is that one meal or three meals, two meals?
That's a monthly allocation. They get a monthly allocation based on their income and how many people are in the household and qualify for the program.
Now, is the hundred, if, okay, the monthly allocation, does that come to them one time a month or, or every week?
It comes to them one time a month. And they get that on an E B T card, and that's based on their qualifying criteria.
Okay.
So one family could get fifty dollars, another one get?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Correct. Correct. I think Brandy, Brandy's going to talk about emergency assistance really quick.
So a little bit about the emergency assistance, assistance program. It is a program that we operate, um, that provides assistance to family in crisis situations. Normally, it's heating and cooling services. So our peak season is the month of December through March, and we normally run that program until the funds are exhausted. We are anticipating that this year, we're not going to receive as much funds as we have in the past due to the shutdown. We have got notification that we will receive automatic LEAP payments, and that is low-income energy assistance program payments. We will be, um, able to receive those payments as well. Currently, we have six hundred and thirty-seven citizens that are on that list to receive an automatic LEAP payment. And that will be for their primary heating source. Those automatic LEAP households are determined based off of if they have someone age sixty or older in the home, someone who's disabled, their income or resource limit met their criteria last fiscal year, or depending on the other services they receive within the county. In twenty-twenty-five, just to give you a little bit of a rundown, in twenty-twenty-five, the, our department issued approximately two thousand emergency assistance payments to families, just to show you how much of an impact that's going to be this upcoming year.
I do know there's other programs out here, and the power company's got one.
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
That Blue Ridge, that will help out, you know, because you, you step up to the next dollar on your power bill, that's what that's for. And I don't know if y'all talk to them, or they talk to y'all, or how that works.
We do. We have meetings with them, and we do advise clients or households whenever they come in to apply. If we don't have those funds, we refer them to different places, and sometimes it is their, their power company.
Duke has the same, for example.
We use Yoke Fellow a lot as well. They get funding, churches.
There's a few churches that, uh, if, let's just say light bills, four hundred dollars, and D S S can pay two hundred, a lot of times the church will pay the others.
Yes.
So, yeah, they work really closely with those folks.
Any other questions? It was not the.
I think there's a whole lot of questions. I just don't know if there's going to be any answers.
I know. I feel, it wasn't, um, a very positive presentation, but I hope it was informative. And if you have any questions.
Well, it's positive in that it allows us to know what's coming and potentially coming.
Right.
And there's going to have to be some hard decisions made if, if things don't follow through like normal.
Right.
Which is going to impact a lot of folks evidently.
Yeah, correct. Well, if you do have questions, feel free to reach out, and I will answer them if I can or find out the answer. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kim. Good job, as always.
Thank you.
All right. And that brings us to our fourth item on the agenda this evening. And that is a discussion of our county manager. And I'll lead that off by saying we know that we've been in search of a, a new county manager within our county, and we think that we have found, we know that we have found, uh, the, uh, person and applicant. We done some, an interview with this gentleman, and, uh, so he's here tonight with his wife. And so I'll, uh, open that up if anybody else has a discussion around that before we entertain a motion.
I'd like to say a couple of things, Randy. I just want to say, uh, I'm, basically, I'm proud to say that tonight we are bringing a county, a Caldwell County native home, someone who has gained financial experience and knowledge as a local government auditor, who has gained experience working with partners and collaborating with others at the High Country Cog, and someone who has managed, experienced as the county manager in Alexander and town manager in Blowing Rock. I think this hire will be a major piece of our legacy as a board. I'm going to go ahead and I'll make another statement. I think this is a piece of the puzzle that's been left out of this county for some time. And for those reasons, I would move that the board approve the county manager employment contract for Billy Shane Fox as county manager of Caldwell County.
All right. Is there any other discussion around the motion? With that, I'll call the question then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So Mr. Fox will be assuming that role December the first, at our first Monday in December, we just happened to be having a meeting that night. And we'll be doing his swearing-in and all the things that accompany that. But he and his wife Jennifer are here tonight, and, uh, well, I will certainly give you an opportunity to say something, Shane. If you would, I'd like to, I've kind of seen you rare, and you're like a racehorse there in that seat, ready to, to bounce up, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Good evening, and thank you. Um, wow, thank you, and I appreciate you guys extending your confidence in me to be the next county manager here in Caldwell County. You mentioned coming home, you know, driving down here, it was familiar. Walking in, it felt like home. It felt like this is where we need to be. I appreciate my family, Jennifer, uh, being here tonight. We have three children, one that lives here, and two more that'll be coming very soon. Looking forward to working with everyone, getting, um, the ground, hitting the ground running December first with the staff, and looking forward to what we can accomplish together as a group. Thank you for extending your confidence and allowing me to be the next county manager here.
Well, we appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you willing to come, right?
Sure. Absolutely.
And to, to expand on Patrick's comment about you coming home, tell the people that are watching at home on television a little bit about, just a brief scenario. are watching at home on television a little bit about, just a brief scenario about why he made the comment about you coming home.
Yeah, so my wife Jennifer and I, we're both from Caldwell County. I go back, I think, a little bit farther than her, my family goes back before Caldwell County was Caldwell County. So, I'm a Fox, I'm also a bumgarner, a Chandler, a Pennel, a lot of different things that have names that recognize, recognizable names within this county. So, it is truly coming home here. So, not only was I able to be reared in the Dudley-Shelvis community and Granite Falls and Granite Falls Elementary and South Caldwell High School, Caldwell Community College, Dr. Port chair, and then Appalachian State. So, this is truly coming home for us, and we're appreciative of the opportunity to be here.
Good, we're excited to have you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank y'all. Congratulations.
All right, so, can't say how pleased we are, and just appreciate the process and getting to this moment in our time in history, so, thank you again. And that brings us then to our consent agenda and our interim county manager, whose job is ending up in a little while, but Mr. Wayne Rasch.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. First item on our consent agenda tonight is number four, communications center recorder. This budget revision allows for the purchase of a new recorder system for the 911 center paid for with 911 fund dollars, and so, that's on our agenda. The next is number five, a budget revision for a 911 fund repayment. Every year, of course, there's an audit done of those 911 funds and the expenditure, and we have to return about, I think it's 14,000, yeah, a little bit over 14,000, 14,124 for that. Number six is a designation of an agent form for hazard mitigation grants for the water department, appoints the interim county manager and the deputy manager as those agents, and that needs board approval tonight. Number seven is a budget revision for water fund ticket system. We allow the water fund to purchase a new ticket system to keep track of work orders and those sorts of things, comes out of the water fund, so does not require general fund appropriation. And then, the next is number eight, a budget revision for forklift for the warehouse that the county's working on purchasing. We received a grant for emergency management in the prior year for $50,000. This would allow us to move that grant money over to this year to spend those grant funds for that purpose. The next item is jury commission appointment. Our clerk, clerk of court has requested a certificate of appointment from Mr. Monty Woods to serve as a jury commissioner for the next two years, and that does require board approval as well. And then, number 11 is Caldwell County Housing Appeals Board appointments. You have four folks in front of you, applications for four individuals to serve in those four positions on that housing appeals board, which would be, be for anytime there's an appeal of an action done under a minimum housing ordinance. The fifth appointment to that board is the sheriff, and so, he doesn't get a say in that, so, unfortunately, but for the other four appointments, those are in front of you. Number 12 is EMS peer review committee appointments, and you have those appointments, those names in front of you as well. The one name we would add is it does require commissioner appointment, and Commissioner LaBrosse has agreed to serve on that peer review committee for EMS. And that's a committee that's required under our general statutes and North Carolina Code, administrative code as well. And then, finally, item 13 is approval of amendments from the September 22 meeting of the board, so.
All right, so here in the consent agenda presented, so I hear a motion that we adopt the consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move that we approve the consent agenda as the interim county manager has presented.
All right, any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, and with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you again for being here, and hope you have a good evening.